Very good. We're on, guys. Thank you all for coming for tonight's Wareham Zonic Board of Appeal. It is Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, 6:30 PM, and we are at Room 420, I mean, sorry, 520 Multiservice Center, 48 Marion Roadway, Hamas. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Christopher Conti, Mr. Richard Semple; my far right, Ms. Troy Larson; our clerk, Jim Akabachi; to my direct right, and myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khulasi; also present, Town Planner, Mr. Josh Flattery; and Assistant Planning Department, Mrs. Sonia Raposo. All right, I would start with the minutes of 10:09:24.
I've reviewed the, I've reviewed the minutes from 10:09:24. Found no errors. Motion to accept as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion by, Jim, do we have second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Minutes carries. All right, Dakota Partners, 2-18, 3-102 Cranberry Highway.
Thought we were done with these guys.
Almost, almost.
I wanna state your name for the racket.
Mark Palott, with Dakota Partners.
Dominic Rinaldi with BSC Group, the engineers.
Peter Freeman should be online.
That's okay. So what brings you here tonight? For why?
We're here for a notice of project change.
And is it a project change, you changed something with the engineering or with the logistics of the project or with the paperwork? Anything with grading, building, locations?
Nothing with the buildings. No, nothing with the buildings.
Project change of what?
Project change was affiliated with the fire access routes.
Okay, so it is engineering?
Yes.
So you have issue with the fire department?
No, I don't have an issue.
Right, but I mean, that was a question.
Yeah, we walked the property as we normally do with them, just in, you know, as we were ready to start the construction, to see if there's any type of problems and concerns. And we had concerns in respect to the fire access that was between Phase 2's, Buildings A and B. It was very, very tight, much tighter than what we did across the way between Phases 1 and 3. So the concern is just the logistics of how to get a ladder up. If it's wet in there, if it slides a little bit because of ice or something like that, it was just a safety issue. So we went through other options with the fire department to see if we could figure something out that would work better for them, which I think we found a solution that works a heck of a lot better at the end of the day.
Which building? The two that are not done?
The two that are under construction, so if I may. So if you're looking at the first plan, for example, that shows the full site, the two buildings on the left, Buildings A and B.
Okay.
And if you may remember, the original design between them, where that walkway is, was a walkway with Grass Creek Fire Lane. That's the area Mark was saying is tight. And when the fire department looked at it, they weren't as enthused. So in replacement, if you look behind those buildings, you'll see a hatched-out area coming rather lengthy. So we had already had, from that northern piece of parking lot, a section of Grass Creek Fire Lane. And this just extends it all the way down as far as you can see behind those two buildings. It's grasscrete, it's, there's some out there now. It looks like grass. It's just the reinforced turf material that they can drive on and set their outriggers on. And they liked it. It gives them, frankly, more access than they had previously. So the fire department was happy with that.
Okay, did Allen and Major look at it?
Yes, they did. And Phil issued a letter on the 18th detailing his responses. I don't think he had any, I don't wanna speak for me, it's here.
Phil, can you come forward, please? Let's hear it from him, make our life easier. Okay, name and address, Phil, for the racket.
Yes, good evening. Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. Mr. Chairman, we did have a chance to review it. We got a copy of the materials. We did issue a letter, as they're referring to the board a couple of days ago. Ostensibly, we have no recommendation issues for you to not accept the change. It does provide better access for the fire department than was previously approved. The length of the fire access road, just so you are aware, would not comply with the NFPA code. However, the fire department has acknowledged that and they're willing to accept it as drawn. So they have the authority, having jurisdiction to that. And they issued a letter that the applicant had submitted with their request for a notice of project change. There's no grading associated with this work. There are no other drainage-based elements. So it really is a straightforward fire access change. My one note, just to raise to the board's attention, is previously, the access was between the two buildings where they were going to have a curved island. Since they're removing the fire access, they're seeking to replace that curved island with two parking spaces. That's part of their request. We would suggest to you to maybe have them consider keeping an island there because it's a direct connection to the courtyard behind the buildings. But it's certainly to your discretion.
So they showed the island on the plan?
So, yeah, if you look, again, in between the buildings where that walkway is still.
C-201?
Yeah, C-200 is probably the best one because it shows the whole thing. Unfortunately, this is right on the line between plans. There's the walkway you can still see between the two buildings.
Okay, and the two, you're saying, Phil?
Right in front of that originally was two, was an 18-foot-wide island.
Let me finish with him, so go ahead.
Where the dark and dashed line is, Mr. Chair, on C-200, they used to have a wide island in that location that they're seeking to replace with the two parking spaces that are shown. It would mirror the other island that remains on the westerly side of that parking tray. Again, it's just a commentary and suggestion for consideration since it is part of the accessible route, part of the walking connection. They do maintain that there's plenty of pedestrian access to that rear courtyard, which is a true statement. But that certainly seems to provide slightly better access.
No, you can't.
Yeah, so that island was originally there for fire access. That's why I was there, it was gonna be an asphalt island. It wasn't landscaped or anything. So from our standpoint, I don't think they have any objections. If you would like to keep, I think what Phil mentioned is replacing one of those two spaces with a similar island. So it'd be a nine-foot-wide island. I don't have any issues with that.
Yeah, a landscaped nine-foot island. I just didn't wanna have it as a plot, an area where some kid would wanna drive up onto it for whatever reason. Just having a nice island, it would be best. Or parking spaces.
All right, I'll pass it to the board. What do you think, Troy?
I don't have any questions.
Jimmy?
No questions.
Chris?
No questions, I read it all.
Richard?
So I'm getting that the fire department's okay with pulling straight in and then backing straight out?
That is correct, yes, yes.
But all the times, how can we always fight it all the time?
Is your mic on?
They're supposed to be able to turn around.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it is.
They make me on all my projects.
That's the issue, is if you go a fire lane beyond 150 feet, you have to provide a turnaround unless the fire department determines that it's not warranted, and that's what they've done here.
That's why you said that they're the governing body, so.
That's correct. We can recommend it all day, but they're the ones that have to use it. And they've accepted that this is fine with them.
I don't understand.
You're good?
Nope.
Anyone in the public who wanna speak on this matter? Hidden none, so what's the wishes of the board?
Is this, is this a hearing that's already, we've already closed?
No, no, this is like a request for minor modification on a project change. In this matter, it's a 40B, it's a project change.
So we have to determine whether we feel as though it's substantial or insubstantial? Or do we all agree that it's insubstantial?
Kinda, because it's a 40, kinda like this. It's a 40B, like, it's a notice of project change. Yeah, let's see if it's non-substantial.
I move that it's a minor or a non-substantial edit to the plan.
And you're in agreement with granting it? Might as well make same.
I can make it all in one motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I find it to be insubstantial. I find it to be acceptable as presented. I think it's a good idea that maybe, as much as I hate islands in this instance, I see the point about making a standard island, not an apron for a fire truck.
Right.
We agree, yep. Landscape.
Where is your stamp here, on that, on that plan? Do you have a stamp there?
This is random. I don't know why it didn't show up.
Huh?
I don't know why it didn't show up. I can get you a stamp set.
I need to refer to it.
The ones that we uploaded on the Building Department portal have the stamps on it. These are the ones we're printing for tonight.
The numbers the same?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the same plans. I don't know why the stamp didn't show up.
Do you recall what date was the stamp?
It's 10/7.
10/7?
Yeah, that's the plan date.
And who's, what's your name of your firm?
BSC Group. It's up in the top right corner.
BSC Group, yeah, BSC, okay. All right, so according to 10/7/2024, stamped by BSC Group, we're gonna take his word for it, he's on public racket, so. So we have motion, Jim, to grant as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
And aye, or abstain, doesn't matter. You only need three numbers, so it's aye. 4-0-1.
Thank you. If I could, just like to give you a quick update of where we are on the project, because obviously, I'm gonna be calling Phil to come out to the site to take a walkthroughs when we start getting to the final, all the miscellaneous stuff that needs to be done, landscaping, et cetera. We'll be coming back to you for the release on the CO so that the Building Department can issue the CO for the buildings. So as it stands right now, we're looking probably towards December. Coming back is my gut feeling right now. I do have one issue that's going, that might be a problem, which I'll present to you at that time, which is really the timing of the asphalt, the top pavement coat. The binder's down, I just gotta do the finish coat. And I'm just fearful of getting too far into the winter. And I don't wanna put down a.
Yeah, I know, you will need a performance bond.
Yeah, I have a performance bond, and I had copies of it here with me of what we have in place already now. We have like a $400,000 performance bond in place. I've gone through it all, what it looks like, because part of the line items on here was the top, was the asphalt. And that asphalt would have been 61,000 plus.
But Mr. Cordero would know how to price that. We don't know how, they price it like on a state.
It varies.
Everal price.
Yeah.
Not a local estimator, you know? Whatever, like, unfortunately, what the union would charge.
Yeah, or what the oil prices are for petroleum products.
Sound like this. Mr. Cordero knows, so he'll come up with the, with that thing.
This is, this format here is what we submitted and got the bond set with the last town engineer. So I'll be coming back with that as well when I have.
But you got it on by Allen and Major?
100%, he'll go through.
Not a week prior, start running it right now.
Oh, yes.
So you have time.
I've already kinda started talking to him about it. That's for sure.
Very well, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night. 4-0-1, Richard. Okay, Penrose LLC, Littleton Drive. Anybody here from 30-20, Penrose LLC? Well, the same thing, I think they came last week. They need, Phil, did they run anything by you yet? Well, they have the message, so we'll ignore that one. We're gonna go to continued public hearing. Indian, 36-24, Indian Neck Property LLC. Special permit, site plan review variance, 50 Indian Neck Road. All right, let's see. You don't, counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We've taken a look at your suggested improvements to the site plan. And we're ready to report back that, with the exception of a couple of items that the neighbors have raised.
For the racket, counsel, name and address for the racket.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mark Popravsky, my office is in Concord, Massachusetts. I represent both Gosnold and the property owner.
All right.
So as I was saying, and as Mr. Madden, I'm sure, will show you, the list that you sent out, that Mr. Madden sent out after discussing the matter with you has been incorporated now into the site plan. Why don't I let Bill walk you through the changes that he's made? And I think you have the new site plan, which is dated, revisions dated today.
Yeah, 21, okay. All right, we can hear from Mr. Madden. What we changed, what we didn't change.
Okay, Bill Madden, from the, I've been here, here in behalf of the applicant. We did the plan, prepared several plan changes. We had the plan changes, for the most part, on the drawing. And we ended up with a meeting with the neighborhood group and the owners of the facility, operators and what have you. And there were a couple of other things that were addressed at the time we were on-site. And so we made the changes that we were directed to make by the applicant at that, at that site meeting. And most of those changes, I wanna say, were directly related to the abutters and what some of the specific elements the abutters wanted. But we hit most of them, and I can go over them quickly for you. We submitted a revised set of plans. I think we submitted them on Monday is when we submitted those to you. And today is Wednesday, so I don't think, there wasn't a tremendous amount of time available to review them. But I'm happy to go over the changes with you now.
There's nothing that would have been submitted that the building inspector, commissioner, would have needed to see.
No, not at least.
No, I didn't, okay.
Let's hear it.
Okay, why don't we start with, I think I put a separate sheet in there for Forest Way.
What's the number of the sheet?
13 of 13. And I'll just bring this one up because it's one larger item on the entire, on the entire project. We felt that that made more sense to be that entirely by itself on a separate sheet of paper as it relates to the access to the neighborhood and what have you, but into the facility itself. But the shaded area indicates what we're proposing to do at Forest Way. And I think that what we're proposing to do out there at the present time with respect to the pavement itself is to mill about an inch off that pavement and put maybe two inches back of top wearing course for the entire, for the entire length of Forest Way, including the cul-de-sac and the aprons, with the driveway aprons that are within the layout, within the layout of the road. We also make a note on the plan about the precast concrete curb. Any of the precast concrete curb sections that are damaged, they're to be replaced with new concrete curb and what have you. So essentially, what we'll have is a pretty well-refurished Forest Way. And it should, it should look, should look pretty much like the, like it did when it first went down. So that's what we did with Forest Way. We didn't call for a full-depth reconstruction on it. The Lawrence Lynch was the paving company that we thought would have, would come out there and perhaps do that work. And after the owner consulted with them, felt that the milling and the overlay would be satisfactory. The curb reveal was pretty substantial out there. So that was my thought, that I thought we could just put a top coat of two inches as opposed to one, you know, the aggregate size and what have you. Think it's a little bit better job and have a little more longevity to it.
How about the sidewalk?
The sidewalk, we're calling for the sidewalk to be, to be removed and replaced. Because you can't really get in there and mill that. But we're talking about replacing the sidewalk.
All right.
So that's what we have for Forest, that's what we have for Forest Way.
So the curving, they're gonna replace the broken one?
Any damaged curving will be replaced. And we looked at it, and I didn't think it was in terrible, terrible condition. But there were a few pieces that were all right, that were damaged rather. And then a few other things that are attributable to the site development. We'll go over here. But this is the demolition plan, and we're gonna repave the entire parking facilities. There will be, reconstruct a portion of the, what's called the main parking lot, we need to do one sentence. Due to the need to change slope of that parking lot to collect all the drainage and what have you. So there's some portions of this that are gonna be milled and overlaid. There's a couple of portions that will be full-depth reconstruction. Some portions are just gonna be cut right out and eliminating the driveway accesses that exist from Forest Way to the facility. Are a couple of examples of those areas that'll need to be, need to be removed and filled in. So you can see how we've filled those in at those, at those locations. We modified the ambulance drop-off area. We designated an area for ambulance drop-off. We done the original plan, just realigned it a little bit to reduce the slope of it somewhat. So we have a 10-foot-wide area off the sidewalk and area for the ambulance to pull in. And they can unload into the parking area, get onto the sidewalk and push the gurney, if need be, up the, up that 10-foot-wide cast-in-place concrete sidewalk. In this parking lot, we are gonna reset and replace, as necessary, the existing wheel stops that are in that parking lot. Many of them seem to be put in places, rebar. Then there were an equal amount that didn't seem to have any anchoring whatsoever on it. So we just covered that with our note on the plan, similar to what we've done for the new parking area, is to, is to reset those curb stops and re-anchor them appropriately on the, on the site. Additionally, I guess we had, when we were talking about the site, there was a little bit of an issue with the coverage with lighting on the site. There were a couple of spots on the site that didn't really have adequate coverage. So we added a couple of more light fixtures. There was one down here on this piece here. And we've also called for the light fixtures within the parking field itself to be, to be replaced. Not only the fixture head itself, but also the pole. And in instances where the cast-in-place concrete base is deteriorated, backed into a damage, we've called for that to be, to be replaced as well. So the lighting plan, I guess, the lighting plan, it shows the, shows the additional lighting that we've added and the photometrics that go on with those lights. If I can remember what page it was on.
Doesn't matter?
Page eight, go.
Well, the photometrics, those are, that's only the landscape plan that we, that we have a little bit additional work to do. You can see that the way the photometrics is shown in the light lines and the foot candles that are associated each one of those, those lines indicates good coverage of the entire parking field and the accessway, even that they're rare at the site in the rear parking lot. So we covered the areas that might have been a little, little light with.
These are photoelectric, they'll be on all night as long as it's dark, right?
On all night?
I mean, they're photoelectric, right? So that's mean they stay on whenever it's dark?
Yes.
Or they have a timer?
Well, it can be either way. I almost thought that you may be conditioning that in some manner.
Yeah, photoelectric is better.
So there's ultimate flexibility with the hours of operation with the lights on the site.
Okay.
I find both photoelectric and a time clock to work together very well. Because if the photoelectric is satisfied by the sun, doesn't matter what the time clock says, it's not coming on. And if something fails with the photoelectric cell, the time clock still saves you a little bit of juice.
We're showing it, we're showing an eight-foot board-on-board wood fence at the, at the property line to the, to the site along Forest Way. We didn't detail that yet. We're still waiting for a little bit of discussion on the top that we're gonna put on. And I think we were looking at a six-foot board-on-board style fence with whether we're gonna use vertical ballisters or lattice work on the top, the top 18 inches, two feet, to give us good coverage of 10 feet, thereabouts, along that axis, screening it from the, from Forest Way. So that heavy line is shown on the, the plan. There is a gate that just allows egress out of the handicap parking portion of the site onto Forest Way. That would be the only way you could leave this portion of the site or parking area. We also show where the wooden fence.
But if we, let's, can we get, finish the lighting first?
Sure.
Going by the entrance, when you go in the back, there's a, there's a, there's a light, then there's about 10 parking spots. There's a light, then you continue. And we're looking about 100, about 150 feet to go onto that new pavement, you show. But it's, it's pretty dark all the way. There's no lighting at all for 150 feet.
Well, there's actually, at the end of this parking field, there's one here, there also is one there.
Yeah, you keep going. Yeah, let, turn over to the back.
The other way. This way.
Yeah.
Yep.
The, the whole stretch, there's no lighting.
Well, that's where we've added additional illumination there. You can see that there is.
Yeah, but to get there, Bill, to get there, there's 150 feet from that light to there, it's gonna be pretty dark.
From here to there? Okay, well, there's, there is also a light shown right here on this island, although the illumination is an existing light on that island.
Oh, okay.
Ready to turn around?
All right, okay.
So I think that provides us with a little more coverage.
All right, I didn't see that one.
Yeah.
Okay, very well. All right, let's go back to the fence.
Okay, so our wood fence, we'll show the wood fence coming up, essentially, at the property line. And then we're gonna run the wood fence, let's see, how many feet back? Where are we going? It was almost in line with the, the wood fence was almost in line with the house at number 12.
Right, now what happened to, we talked about a brick fence and metal fence, brick and metal, like rods?
Yeah, we had that discussion, and I think that differed, our discussion differed from the discussion we had with the neighbors and the owner-applicant on the site. So there was a desire to place that wood fence with the, with the top on it as opposed to the stone fence. And then place the landscaping in front of that fence as well. Groups of landscape material that designated port places along the roadway, along Forest Way, in addition to the street trees that are presently there.
All right, that's something we'll have to discuss among the board. And going back to the fence to the back, so you didn't go all the way to the end of the property? You went with the, with the halfway?
Basically, to the, it lines up pretty much with the corner of the existing house, number 12.
Okay.
And then it lines up with the back end of the fire department turnaround at the, at the lower rear parking lot. So that was, that was a suggestion that was made at the site inspection that we had there. The feeling was is that there really isn't that many people or any people for that matter that would be encroaching on that, on that, on that fence or in that, on that property. There was also other discussion about, you know, we talked about having an access path around it and some security lighting. And there was a little bit of discussion about the need for lighting. So there was, there was not a real appetite for any lighting or security cameras back there or the pathway for that matter. So we just showed the fence.
We'll go back to the fence, the drainage. Did you test, test what there and is a need, a need of repair? Is your drainage, your calculation all good?
The drainage is good, but the notes that we placed in the plan were that we would do the infield inspections. You know, excavate out those pits, look at them all. And if, if the need arose, we would be excavating adjacent to the pits, looking at the soil and what have you. But yes, it seemed like it was all in pretty good, pretty good order, the way, the way it currently functions. The back area where we added the new drains, there was really no question. I don't think there was any question on our part about the ability of that area to handle the stormwater that's going to be developed.
You did soil tests and all?
We did all the soil tests out there. We have the test results and it's all good cover sands in, in that location.
All right, what else we have? We'll leave the fence to the end.
And I think they wanted, there was a desire to have some signage placed along Forest Way that stated it was a private way, residents only, that type of thing. So to prevent unauthorized travel on that road by people that really don't belong there.
Any specific size or standard state size?
We would use the standard size that the, the manual designates for a sign such as that.
All right. Let's, okay, I guess we're, we're stuck with the fence in now. So let's go back. Okay, originally we suggested to the boards, we have like some brick fencing, like four feet, like sections, 20 feet and a column. And then filled up with metal rods, then the landscaping behind it. So it'll give some character to the road. Then going around with the chain link fence all the way to the property line for security reasons, so nobody could leave or unchecked. Of course they could leave, but can't, can't leave being unchecked. And so I guess they coming up with this wood fence, which I disagree with. And they moved the chain link fence from the end of the property to pretty much where the parking, which I'm okay with, I know Jim has a problem with it. So I'm going to start asking, go with Jimmy first, so what you?
My main concern about the location of the fence is not from personal knowledge, it's from hearsay. But what of the opposition to this project amongst the community was that of course, there's a henny penny situation here where the acorn fell and the sky is falling. And no acorn fell on my head, but nonetheless, it's believed that this land that is going to be owned by this detox center is currently houses a community of homeless people who are drug abusers. Whether it's true or not, I can't attest to. It's believed. So with that belief in mind, I felt as though it was appropriate to bring the fence right to the end of the property and help the community feel as though Gosdahl was doing everything they could to control what goes on, on their property. That's my, that's my reason.
We did have an original plan done and showing that. I have that plan here. And after showing it to the neighbors and talking with the neighbors, they were trying to, they're trying to keep as much privacy and keep as many of the trees as possible. And so the alternative plan came up after meeting with the neighbors. We're willing to do either one, but we were trying to keep the neighbors happy. And like I said, in fact, we have this that shows the 10 foot buffer cleared all the way around with chain link fence in that location. So that was the road we were going down. And talking with the neighbors, they said, well, we'd rather keep as many trees. They said they don't see, we talked about the concern about having people living out there. And you know, these are the people that live right there. And they said, they don't see that, they don't, but we're willing to do either.
Okay, that's, that satisfies my concern.
We felt if you put the fence at the end and put a 10 foot strip, the security, the chief is present here today, he could go with the go car, drive around, keep eye on the place. Very small lights, some cameras, so this way he can control the place better. That's, that's where we, that's what we, we thought. But let me ask Troy, Troy, what do you think?
Well, I kind of think that makes sense, but if the neighbors don't want it, I mean.
Neighbors didn't want a sidewalk either because they were afraid that the people that they were afraid of would be walking on the opposite side of the street. So they wanted the sidewalk ripped out and they wanted to invite those people to their side of the street. So neighbors aren't always right.
Because I believe the more fencing and the bigger perimeter, the better the, the chief can secure the place.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did share the plans with Attorney Morton and we've had back and forth about this. And I know that she's prepared to address the concerns of her clients, so.
Neighborhood?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we'll get to that.
Okay.
All right, Chris, what do you think?
So originally it was stone, stone wall, right?
Right.
Up so many feet and then they were going to put it like the metal on top of that. And I thought, I liked that idea better than the wooden fence myself.
Right, and then the landscaping behind it.
Right.
On that land, this way you don't hide the pretty stone fence or brick or whatever.
I like that, but there is also a five foot gap, it looks like there for a fire hydrant, along that forest way. So it's, it's not totally enclosed, right? Because they need to get at that fire hydrant, right? So there's a five.
They'll go around it, they're going to have to go around it. I mean, what's the sense of having fence if you don't secure? The height, that the fence will have to go around it. The engineer will have to design it to go around it or across it. I don't think, if it's about three feet away, it's fine. But whatever the rules are.
It says provide a minimum five feet gap in the fence for fire hydrant access.
Then they have to build around it. I mean, what's the sense, right?
Well, that's why I was asking about.
So they'll have to enclose it. All right, Richard, what do you think?
I'd, I'd like to hear from Attorney Morton. I know that they said that the neighbors, they talked to the neighbors, but she represent them.
Right, but the brick or the wood fence?
I, I thought we came up with a pretty good idea, but.
With the stone fence?
Yep.
Right. All right, do you want to come forward, Counselor?
Hello. Attorney Gillian Morton, I'm representing the Butters who live on Forest Way. And I wanted to start with that it's amazing the cooperation that we've had. It's very nice to be able to be updated regarding the plans, the fact that the property owners went with the engineer on the site. Particularly the, the fencing, that's a big deal. That number 12 over there, that's a huge thing to put a 10 foot buffer and they do not want it. You know, this is going to, do not want what you're suggesting, we want this plan. They went out of their way to do, to walk the site with them. This is going to affect them. They don't want a 10 foot piece of just, I understand what you're talking about of the police getting over there. They've lived there for quite some time. They know that they haven't seen anything. They have cameras themselves, they don't want a bunch of light. So that's a, that's a big sticking point for them.
What's 10 feet?
I, I heard it was suggested to have this clearing.
For the security to drive.
Right, so their property is right there, there'd be this clearing right there versus keeping the trees and the fence, which would be minimally invasive for them. So we are in support of the plan proposed. We also believe, I understand your point of view of the, the brick. But again, these are the neighbors who are right there and they are the ones who wanted the wooden fence. So I would hope that you took that into account. But again, it's, it's up to the board's deference. So you know, as far as the plan that's provided today, we're in full support of that. I don't know if the board makes those changes, if, you know, speaking to my clients, especially that, that one on the end is going to have a problem.
So I want to make sure I'm getting it right.
Yes.
And I even looked on Google Earth. Forest Way comes down to a cul-de-sac. Off the cul-de-sac, you access house number 12.
Right.
So from the end of the cul-de-sac to the currently proposed end of the fence, where it's going to cut across the property. It's all woods, it's all woods right now.
Yes, so they.
Okay, so what, what the neighbors are perceiving is that if this fence went from the end of the cul-de-sac, either to the end of the property or to the currently proposed location, there'd be a 10 foot swath of trees cut down in order to put the fence in. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, well, we had heard that it was going to be a buffer. So there's a 10 foot and then what you're saying, putting lighting, cameras, all of that.
Okay.
And the reason being for the police.
They're not, I just want to make sure I'm hearing it right. They didn't like the idea of having the trees that, it's like, I looked, I looked, it's a.
Yeah, they like it over there.
Undisturbed land right now.
Exactly, so they would.
In order to put the fence in, it would have to be disturbed. And even for this current plan, it would have to be disturbed. I get that. I get the desire for the concrete and steel fence from the cul-de-sac out to the other corner of the property on the whole arch from aesthetic point of view. From the end of the cul-de-sac and beyond and down into the wooded area, I suggest that a chain link fence or, you know, a wire fence or something like that that could be put through the woods without cutting trees.
Right.
Might appease, not only appease the neighbors, provide the amount of security that everybody's looking for. And you know, eliminate the need for the 10 foot path. Even though when I look on Google Earth, there's already a clearing from the cul-de-sac at the end of, what's that, Peter Cooper or whatever that other, that.
Yep.
It's mine at Forest, isn't it? Are you talking about the path?
I'm talking about, there's another.
The end of Peter Cooper where the cul-de-sac is, if you look, there's a path that goes right to the back of this building.
Straight, yeah.
That's a section of undeveloped road from cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac. From this cul-de-sac to another cul-de-sac, there's a whole section that was cleared to be a road. You can still see it on an aerial map.
Interesting.
Go ahead.
Just to give you a little more insight on what we did, we actually sought some lines, some straight lines between the wooded area. You know, it's not forested, so to speak. It is, it is wooded. But there was a couple of measurements that were taken, a couple of bean poles that were put out in the field that allowed the fence to be placed within already cleared land. So that we could really run that fence from.
And still be on, and still be on the applicant's property?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would kind of fit in there and it went, it didn't quite go to the corner of the garage at number 12.
Yep.
But it went, it went as the grade started to rise up. The grade rises up a little bit as we head to whatever direction that is, the east surely direction. And we felt that, well, the neighbor felt that we could get that fence in there, put it on Gosdahl's property.
I get, I get all that and I think you could even send a machine through there to do some brush clearing that a small vehicle, electric vehicle or something that if they really wanted to patrol the perimeter, could go without disturbing, without cutting any large caliber trees or anything like that. So I think that's all potentially doable. I think a wooden fence, if, and I'm, I'm only speaking for what I think I'm hearing from the board, wooden fences are finite. They're not infinite. They don't last. We've got stone walls that have been here for 250 years. And none of us are going to be here in 250 years, but that stone fence that you're putting in front of, that these guys want and that iron fence will be unless some human being takes it down. But a wooden fence.
I think.
Depend on the material.
In talking.
Like 10, 20 years. I understand what you. 20 years, you've got a piece of crap. 20 years on concrete with steel built over it, you need some sanding and some painting possibly, and maybe a little bit of pointing possibly. If it's done right the first time, you don't even need that for 50 years. So that's, I'm just trying to get it out there so that everybody hears it, including the neighbors, including the applicant. I think there's a compromise here. I think that the, you know.
Originally.
There's an agreement to fence the property.
Yep.
So I don't think that there's, everybody's far apart. I just think that, you know, sometimes, sometimes we, we're sorry for what we asked for.
Originally, we did talk about putting the stone wall in and iron fence. The neighbors wanted, I think they're looking to screen it more. Then, you know, an iron fence is going to be open. And so for, you might have the stone wall up some height and then it would be open or visible beyond that. And that's why if you look at the landscape plan, we talked about either a six or an eight foot fence at the neighbor's choice. And it could, might be too stagnant in two different areas. And we talked about, while the plan shows it going in an arc all the way, waving it in so we can do some landscape beds in front of it, not just a row of trees or a row of bushes, but landscape beds that are deeper to make it attractive looking. We're willing to do either. We're just trying to keep you happy and the neighbors happy.
Yeah, well, Mike, it matters not to me. And you don't need to make me happy. Honestly, I, I mean that sincerely. I'd like the neighbors to be happy, but I, I'd hate for the neighbors to regret what they asked for. That's the reason I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that, but, and I did have that conversation with the neighbors. But aesthetically, they're going to be staring at this, so they, you know, they walked and that's what they want. You know, I don't know if it would, as far as the fence goes, maintaining it. I know the fine, thinking about it being finite, I mean, they would need to maintain the fence. I guess you could put that in condition.
How easy is it that somebody gets upset or mad and kick that fence?
Hopefully it's a sturdy fence.
Huh?
Hopefully it's a sturdy fence or hopefully the security has stopped them by then because they're going to have full-time security.
I think that's what the board's trying to do for the neighbors is.
All right.
I hear you.
Another thing, the, the perimeter around the fencing, if the security can check it periodically, if somebody cuts a hole in it and go across, what's the sense of having a fence? That's why we need like, I suggested 10 foot perimeter around it. So the security could at least check on it once a week. Because if it's way in the woods and you cut a hole in it, who's going to know? So no sense putting a fence.
True.
Go ahead, you want to say something, Rich?
Well, I was just going to say, I'm pretty familiar with wood fences. And if you put the good side out towards the neighbors, anybody that's on the inside that wants to get out puts their foot right through it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, it's gone.
They're gone before security or anybody catches up to them. And hopefully they'll run into a neighbor's house.
Wooden fences are privacy, they're not security.
Exactly.
Right, that's my, that's my opinion.
It's a decoration is all it is.
Troy, what do you think?
And I understood that this was supposed to be a secure facility.
Right.
Right, I agree.
So you agree with the, with the chain link in the woods with the, now do you guys want it on the property line or what it is, it's fine if we do like 10 foot grass strip for security to check all the time?
I think that makes sense because it's got to be maintained and checked.
Exactly, and keep an eye on it. You guys agree?
I agree.
But what it is right now, it's fine, right? Don't have to be at the end of property.
This isn't the last time these guys are going to be here, is it?
Pretty much.
You hoping to leave here with a, with an okey dokey tonight?
We've already approved the use variance and all that's left is the site plan. So we were hoping to cover all the bases.
All right, and like, like Jim said, I don't think the neighbors know what they're getting into.
May I speak for a moment?
Yeah, so I don't think, grab a chair until I'm done.
There's a microphone over here, come over here.
Okay.
We won't, we won't, we won't make you swear or anything.
Richard Kukuru, President and CEO Gosdahl.
Excuse me, I run the show here, nobody interrupts me, please. I call when you speak and everybody speaks. Nobody interrupts me when I'm speaking, please, or we'll shut this hearing. So let's go back to the thing. I haven't spoken, I haven't, I let you, I give you the floor to speak. Let me finish. Going back to the fence, the neighbor would regret it as Mr. Akabachi said, and it's not secure like Mr. Sample said. So I'm set on the brick fence, so is Mr. Conti and Mr. Sample. And there's three of us so far, and I guess Mr. Larson with us. On the chain link fence, I insist on a 10 foot grass strip from inside for security to keep checking on that fence. That being said, please sir, you name an address for the record?
Richard Kukuru, 200 Terahoon Drive, Falmouth, Massachusetts.
Okay, so what do you like to say?
I, I just want to make a comment about some of the comments that have been made about the security of this facility. I just want to confirm and, and remind everybody, this is a voluntary facility. Patients don't need to make holes or kick the fence or get out. They can walk out the front door, not a problem at any time. There, there is no need for anybody to try to escape from this facility because anybody who wants to leave the facility anytime can leave. We don't accept violent patients. There are patients here who are not involuntarily committed to this facility. Again, it's 100% voluntary and patients can leave at any time. So we've never had, in the 52 years we've had, we've been running Gosdahl in Falmouth, we've never had a damage of facility. we've never had a damage of facility, patients have never broken a fence, kicked a wall to try to get out of the facility. All we have, all they have to do is say, "Open the door," and we let them out. So I, I, I hear the point, and I hear your point regarding the concerns of the community. But I have, I have to say that those concerns are unwarranted because of the fact that it is a voluntary facility, and patients do not act out in, in the way that it's being described here today.
I, I do understand what you're saying. However, we're not only, I'm not only concerned about the patient, I'm concerned about people outside the facility. And I'm afraid there's people going to be, I know my town. I've been here 40 years, trust me. People will be running in that place, God knows what would they do. And if you don't, if, if, that's the reason we're putting a fence, otherwise, we don't put a fence. Who wants a fence? It's not pretty, but it's supposed, like Mr. Sample said, it's supposed to be a secure place. If you don't have a fence, that's meaning you welcoming people who lives in the woods, and we know people lives in the woods there, or at least they go do illegal activities there. Maybe they don't, but I've seen many people, I've seen the cops there many times. Because I did few buildings down the street, so I traveled a lot for like a year there on that road. There's always the cops, always questioning people sitting on the side of the road, always people with backpacks running in there. I've seen it, my own eyes. So this is what we concerned of. I know the people can leave, like you said, but-
It's like Animal Kingdom. We're not trying to keep the animals-
I get it.
So if you open the door-
So, so you're, you're more concerned about this, these so-called people coming in as opposed to the inside coming out? I, I get your point.
I mean, if your gate is open and you, you complain people coming in, okay, you have your gate open. I don't know what to tell you. You, you, your door is open. Sort of, sort of what we have at the borders. You have no borders, people come in, so, and you complaining and coming in, so you have no borders. So, so here we go. This is the idea. We're not trying to make you spend money, we're not trying to be hard, difficult.
Well, I don't think, I don't think there's been an, an issue about whether, you know, the, the financial difference between putting the fence here or at the property line, or, I think that, again, the concern is, you know, the, the, what I've heard is the concern of the, you know, you're cutting down the trees to put up solar fields, you know? How's that green? Well, that's another whole argument, but I don't think they're going to destroy the forest to put in this fence.
I don't think either, and that, but that ten-foot strip should be there for inspection. That's what I think. I guess there's something the board and decision have to make. If we, the board grants the site plan, it would be one of the conditions. If they don't agree on it, I mean, you have, you have your say. But right now, like I said, you get four people, you have four people who wants the brick and wants the path next to this chain link. Yes, sir?
Can I make a suggestion? Can I come up? I want to show you on the plans.
True.
Here's the original plan, where we had the chain link fence-
Yeah.
Requested in the ten-foot strip all around. Here's number 12, which seems to be the biggest.
Yeah, we see him right here.
Right. So what if we did the iron fence in the front? And again, we've got to go back to, we'll landscape it as heavily as we can. But they're looking to have, to not see the building from their side of the street.
We're just caught in the middle here. It's not good being caught in the middle here.
House number 12 is here.
You jog it in?
Oh, even if we came-
House number 12 is right here.
Yeah, I know. So you jog it in like this and go like that?
Right, yeah. I'll put it, you know, if you want chain link there, and then we'll put-
You said, you said bring it in here.
Well, we've already agreed to bring it in.
I'll get you.
Move it into the-
So go like that, you know what I'm saying?
I see what you're doing.
I mean, yeah, it's an option.
We're trying to keep his, give him as much privacy.
When do you go, like 40 feet, 30 feet?
Yeah, it's, even this fence, we had told them we would bring it into our line to, so that it wasn't right up the narrow. Having the wood fence there, I think is important in that section. And if you want us to put chain link behind it and put a stockade or the wood fence in front of it, we'll do it.
So you feel as though there's a, a view issue there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the lighting, you know, he, they're trying to, before, when-
They don't want to feel like they live next to a shopping plaza. I get it.
Yep.
I get, they feel like they live next to the woods and they want the woods to stay.
Exactly.
And you don't mind keeping the woods.
Right.
You could put a couple houses in there, you know?
We're moving in. So again, in cutting it here, we're flexible on, but I think we, cutting this strip here, I think is going to be concerning to the neighbors.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming up.
It's not just so concerning, it could be substantially detrimental to them.
Say it again?
It, it could be substantially detrimental to them. Like, they could see that as, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, like, they're working-
What the, what the developer suggestion, we cut it in like it's going on the road, what a Indian neck, what's the name of that road?
Forest Way.
Forest Way, and cuts in like 40 feet and, and then go back to the end of property, give them like more, you know what I'm saying, Bill? That's a good suggestion.
So like you said, excuse me, like you said originally, it sure does appear that there's an air of cooperation from both sides, so that's-
Yeah, and that's, and that's the thing. I think they're trying to help, you know, appease the neighbors and, I think, I just want to reiterate what Bruce had said about the screening part of it. I think that's, my clients didn't like that metal because they're going to be able to see right through versus a fence.
But, okay, the, the landscaping will grow behind after.
Is it going to be like tall abrevities or what?
Behind the fence, but if you have a four-foot stone wall, you're covering a lot. And then the iron, it's every like four inches, you're covering a lot.
When's the, when would, excuse me, through the chair, when would the fence go up? Pre-rehabilitation of the building or post?
During the, during the construction period, yeah.
So if the fence went up early on in the project, because there's going to be masonry work and there's going to be iron work, and then one of them cloth silk fences that the contractors put up sometime went up, and then the landscaping was done behind it, by the time the facility's built, some of that stuff will have been able to establish when you take the cloth fence down. They won't be looking in and seeing a building, they'll be looking in and seeing vegetation. Am I missing the point or?
So the neighbors wanted the landscaping on the street side of it. So that's what they were looking at, and the fence was kind of in back of it. And we talked about, again, move, having the fence kind of sway so there would be areas of more dense landscaping and then have it come out. So it wasn't just one straight fence with a row of bushes in front of it.
They're going to be looking at a brick wall, you know, like a fortress, if it's just the brick, and then you're putting the landscaping behind it, so you're, you're talking about-
Put the landscaping in front of it then.
Maybe I'm missing the, maybe I'm missing the point on the-
Through the chair? I thought there was conversation about how this was all going to be hidden behind landscaping. And it must have been the first or second meeting, said that was all going to be covered, you wouldn't see it, it was all going to grow over. I thought that's what we were told in the beginning.
Right. So we put the landscaping in front of the wall.
And then that way, they, they see landscaping, they see their trees, and they don't see the fence.
How's that?
Better. Yeah.
So, so far, we got, most of us in agreement on that, on that brick fence in the front with the landscaping in front, in front of fence. And you could jog the fence in the back like Mr. Bruce said. Jog it like 40 feet and go back to the end, but keep the ten-foot perimeter so they could drive around and check inside the fence. Now, the section from the cul-de-sac to number 12, the guy worried about a chain link, right? So you, about visibility, he doesn't want to see it behind the fence, right?
Yeah, well, what we had worked out over here was, is his preference. And I know you're saying now this 10 feet, but it's going to push in. Yeah, chain link.
Chain link, so you could have the, the chain link with the slot-
Oh, wood fence until the wooded, yes, wood, but now it has to be, I guess, the brick.
Chain link with the, with the inserts on it, so he can see inside. And then eventually, the woods will grow, and he won't see nothing.
So he's going to have chain link right across his property or near his property?
Thought we were going to have, oops. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, kind of something like this, yeah.
Right, so when you say a brick wall, is that what you're thinking about? That's a, a, a lower stone wall with stone pillars and iron rails in between the pillars. That's what I was thinking when they were saying brick and iron. Pretty, pretty estate-looking, pretty nice-looking, even if you put vegetation in front of it. But if it's just going to be a straight brick wall, I agree, it looks like a fortress.
Yeah. I guess I wasn't picturing with pillars, so I mean, perhaps it visual.
Put the pillars, it'll be like an expansion joint at the same time.
So-
You know?
It's not a great drawing.
And it gives a character.
I see what you're saying.
Not a great drawing, but, you know, I didn't get into Juliet either.
It gives a nice character because the pillars will be like six feet high, and the wall is about 40 inches, and it'll be filled in to make the six feet. Another 32 inches of the metal rods in between the pillars. So that's where we are. What else we have stuck other than fence? What else?
Excuse me.
Are we moving on beyond fencing? I drafted a decision, as we discussed last time, for board's consideration. I'm happy to walk through it.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it's a lawyer talk, we're not lawyers, like you said last time. You don't want to argue with us, so we're not going to understand this, so we got to run it by Mr. Bowen.
Oh, okay. I just got a text from him. He's chasing elephants.
Yeah, I know. When he'll be back?
He's back.
He's back? Okay. So we have 14 days to, to stamp that decision. We'll have him discuss it. We'll stop by one, each one of us if we want to. Or he could email us, let us know what he thinks.
I've made some updates to it based upon this conversation and the new plan set that Mr. Madden produced. I'll send that to Sonia, and she can circulate the new, it'll have today's date on it.
Okay. That being said, we could close, we don't have to render a decision today. Forty-five days to render a decision. We could do a decision next hearing. Or we could make a decision with the conditions for what we talk about on the decisions. So I don't know what's the wishes of the board.
If we're going to put conditions on, I'd like to put the conditions on during a public forum or during a open meeting.
It will be next.
I don't want to say, okay, we're going to vote, and then we'll write up our decision, and you can read it. I'd rather have everybody here when we, you know-
You like the applicant here?
Like the applicant here. I'd like if the neighbors want to be here and hear it, that, I think they're entitled to hear it, you know?
When is the next hearing? When's the next hearing?
13th. 13th.
November 11?
13th.
13. All right, if we, if we send you off, we'll have Mr. Bowen check the decision, Mr. Madden come back with the clean. We, we, the board wants the brick fence, and you could put the landscaping in the front, and the fence in the back to the end of the perimeter with the jog like 40 feet, like we said, with the past 10 feet. So you got, if you could come back next hearing with all this, and we'll have the okay from Mr. Bowen that he reviewed the decision. I think it's, it's fine. I mean, you work in there, it's not like we're stopping you. The building needs a lot of work. I think this will work. What do you think?
I agree.
Well, yeah, I don't think they want to do an awful lot of work on the building.
It's not, it's not like, I mean, there's a lot of work you could do on the site now too, because it's an existing site. If you want to rip a-
Start ripping it off.
Stop ripping stuff, I mean, you could do it. It's not like it's going to hold you up. So why don't we do that? Do you get the idea, Mr. Madden? If you want to call me, I'll swing by next week or next week, check out what you drafted, and we go by there. Counselor, sorry for your neighbors, I, I guess.
Well, is the idea that we're going to close and vote tonight?
No.
Okay, because the, a butter is unavailable, that specific one, and I need to talk to him about-
No, we're not going to close on that.
Okay. I'm not trying to hold it up, I just can't reach him right now, so.
I personally think what's been discussed is in favor of the neighbors' concerns, you know?
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no to that, but I know these two are very specific. They walked the site, so I just need to be able to talk to them, and they probably will talk.
I'm not the neighbor, so, you know.
All right, very good. All right, anyone in the public want to speak on this matter? If I have anyone online? I hear none, so can we move to continue this matter?
So move.
We have a motion to continue by Mr. Akabachi till-
Second.
November 13.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. We see on the 13.
I have another meeting that night, Mr. Chairman. Can I work with Sonia to try to get a-
You don't have to be here.
I'll zoom in.
Yeah.
I'm zooming into the other one anyway, so I can probably do both if we can just coordinate.
Just get your decision to attorney Bowen, and hopefully he gives us thumbs up, and we go from there.
I've already used my personal hotspot to send it.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for efforts.
All right, just continue.
Son, you want these all right in the front?
Yeah, I do too.
Who's next?
Forty-two, forty-two dash 24 Alex Francis Jr. on matters of-
You got a plan?
One sec, please. Yep, yep.
You got a plan down there?
Okay.
He says, I think, Troy can take mine. You all set? Well, it's the only other one I got. Okay, I was hoping you might. Good evening, folks. Robbery 191 Main Street for the applicant. Introduce.
Francis Ellis, 62 Silver Street, Carver.
All right, Counselor. Public hearing's still open, so go ahead.
I'm guessing everybody remembers where we were last time. This was a variance you previously granted. Through errors on his part and other parts, he let it go, so we're here asking you to reinstitute it. Last time, you asked for three things. One is you questioned the septic system. It's been in there since, I think, 17. I went to Pat McDonald, Pat looked at his own stuff, looked at my stuff, and said it's fine. It's all set to go. And you got his letter that I gave you back on the 24th. The other thing you asked for was an updated plan. And Brad from JC gave me an updated plan that's dated November of last year. And the only reason appears for the update is because the septic system right then was already in versus the old plan. They took away all the notes that talked to the septic, what you got to do to build a septic system, because it's built. And on the other side, in the notes, they talk about the septic system being built, and you guys having already granted a variance and project ready to go. So that's, that's the only difference in the plan. The other thing you asked for, and I've never been sure why, was an architect's plan of the house. But I gave it to you. I didn't give it to you till yesterday, and I apologize for that. It just wasn't available till yesterday, so yes. Nazir was pretty smart in asking for a month's continuance, because I would have asked two weeks. So I'd have really been in trouble. I considered asking for a continuance to give you time to look at it, but, you know, it's a pretty simple plan. I mean, it's a pretty straightforward, I think it's five-bedroom, single-family home. So whatever your pleasure is, folks, I mean- Pardon?
Five bedrooms?
That's what I see.
You already designed the, the septic?
Yes.
It's installed for, I mean, this is not our, our problem, it's the border health, but-
It's the border health problem. Oh, he may annually land with four bedrooms.
You already have a six-bedroom, Wareham adds a bedroom, so you already have a six- So you already have a six bedroom septic there?
Well, I think we're down now to just the five, aren't we?
Well, Wareham adds a bedroom by.
Well, I, I checked that and they told me no, but whatever.
Alright, no problem.
I still go by that, quite honestly. But that's a border health issue.
Yeah, right, so we're not gonna discuss that. Troy, what do you think?
I don't have any questions, no problem.
Jimmy?
I think we've made him come back enough times, we can make a vote.
I'm okay.
Richard?
I'm good with it.
Make a motion to close the public portion.
Anybody on, on public, online wanna speak on this matter? I hear none, go ahead Jimmy.
I move, I move to close the public portion of this matter.
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, closed.
Motion to grant, based on the plans provided this evening. I don't have the date.
Alright, we have a motion to grant the variance based on the plan dated October sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, drafted by Jerry Metcalfe L R A from Plymouth Math for Mr. Ellis, for Ellis residence on seven matters of.
Excuse me, Chair, are they stamped?
No.
Okay, they don't need to be?
Not on a single family. I know the commissioner asked for, but.
Yeah, I don't think they do it.
Massachusetts, you don't have to.
Just covering it?
Eventually, when he goes.
We haven't seen a lot tonight, we already don't have a fire engine turn around, we're not doing, we're getting plans the day before and they're not stamped, so I'm just wondering what's going on.
However, let me, when it goes to the building department, he reviewed the structure. If it's not by code, he won't grant it to him. And like I said, Massachusetts, you could have un-stamped plans for single families, single or two family.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, based on a date, for the variance granted based on, from plans dated October sixteen, as we said, with the other information, the variance meets statute requirement of chapter forty-eight, section ten? Ten? Ten, right, section ten. So that's the motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye, it carries.
Thank you very much. Can I just ask you one question?
Yeah, sure.
If in fact border health were to say you can only have four bedrooms, would I have to come back to you on a minor modification?
No, we, the commissioner would not give him a permit. The border health would not sign.
Well, border health has signed, well, that's correct, I understand that.
The border health would not sign the building application.
His question is, if they'll give him a permit for four, does he need to come back here and get a minor modification?
To get rid of the fifth by bedroom?
Yes. I mean, I think probably I do.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And Troy, you know, he could draw his own plan under the law, under the building code, if he were capable of doing it.
Right.
And this plan isn't the final plan in that they gotta have the rafters plans and.
It's not a structure plan, right?
Yeah, it's not a structure plan.
Right.
But it's, it's the basic house.
Right. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
I did show the building commissioner the plan before, he didn't seem to have any concerns.
Okay.
And he said it has to be reviewed prior to issuing the building permit.
Where's your microphone?
Both of them care.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, if he's got the septic system already designed for it, even if he eliminated it, it's still covered even if he wanted to put it back in, you know what I mean?
Right.
The septic system's already in, it's six, five bedrooms. So even if he knocked it down.
No, no.
I will not learn.
This is the third time.
Hopefully he has the five, not the, not the three.
He's gonna be two children, come on up.
Yeah, it is.
The next one.
Thank you.
Alright, there you go. Go ahead Jimmy.
Dayton Street has requested a throw, a withdrawal or a continuance?
No, asking for continuance.
Continuance, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Requesting to continue.
Yeah, and he also emailed the building commissioner, they're working on something, so he needs more time.
So I move to continue until November thirteenth?
I have a motion to continue forty-three dash twenty-four to November thirteenth by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Nazee, it carries.
So we never finished.
It's gonna be close though, cuz they got, what, they're coming into thirteenth and then the twenty-sixth is the deadline, so.
They have to give us.
As long as we don't continue, as long as we don't continue, they'll be good to go.
Or they give us an extension.
And we never did, we never came to a, the third thing under preliminary business, thirty dash twenty, Penrose LLC.
We, we told them what to do last time. Phil, did Penrose approach you? Oh, no, no, they have their own consulting.
Green Seal Environmental.
Yeah, yeah, the envi, yeah. Green Seal, right?
Green Seal.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, they know what to do, we told them we need a report from them, so.
So we're just waiting for the permit?
For the report from the, from Green Seal, yeah. Two, eleven, thirteen.
Okay, so that can, that, that, that covers all agenda business, I think we have.
They have something.
Yes, ma'am, you gotta, it is still public hearings, you gotta read a mic.
Can you talk about the meeting in November?
Sit down on the mic, Chris.
Judge gonna bring it to you.
We have to. Okay, we talk about the meeting in November, yes, we can.
Okay, go ahead.
So what do you guys, what Sonia asking, what do you wanna do for November?
I think one is enough because I, currently I have like five or six submissions that I'll be processing within the next couple of days. And I, it's, it would be for the twentieth, which I think I'm, I've already exhausted my twenty-one days for advertising, so they'll be on the December eleventh hearing.
That's okay, Jimmy, Jimmy, that's okay.
So I don't, I don't think that twentieth date is doable. Because I would have to advertise.
So what are you saying, the twenty-seventh?
Unless, if you wanna hold a hearing on the twentieth, which, if you, I mean to, I have like five or six submissions right now for Z B A before me. If you wanna hold a second meeting in December, I mean, in November, I apologize, I can still advertise on, next week on the thirty-first. I would have to probably like two or three new public hearings. Or only hold one meeting in December, which would be a December eleventh. And one in November, one in December. And you'd have five or six new public hearings in December.
I'm okay with that.
One meeting in November, one meeting in December is what it, really what I've been telling people because the second meeting in November, we're closed on that Wednesday. The twenty-seventh in observance of Thanksgiving and then we're closed December twenty-fifth, which is that second meeting in December, which is Christmas.
Troy, what do you think? One and one, one November? Jimmy?
Yes, we've done that every year that I'm on the board.
One November, one December?
I'm good with it.
We all good with it.
Yeah, cuz currently you have five new public hearings for the first meeting in November and about five or six for December.
Five or six is nothing for this board.
No. I mean, and unfortunately, if anything comes in, if it doesn't meet that December eleventh, they're gonna have to wait for January.
Or any continuance.
I mean, if it's gonna take a long time.
Right.
Meeting in, in November or December.
Or in December, then we'll have to move up a, a week for that December to accommodate our customers. We'll figure it out in December.
We all, we all agree just one and one.
Right, but unless we get like an abundance of new submissions, like just this week alone, I received five on Monday. So if it happens, then we'll have to open up a new date in December.
One and one, it is, what happened, what happens.
Okay, alright.
I mean, if it come, we can't handle them, we continue them, that's it.
Okay.
You know, right? Play it by ear. Phil, do you need anything from us? Sir, are you here for anything? You're just watching?
Oh, yes. He's here, I think.
He's watching the show.
Didn't he apply with a select board?
Yeah, come, come.
Yeah, he applied with a select board to sit on this board.
Everybody, Joseph Still, resident of Wareham, I'm actually on conservation committee as well. I actually recently applied for your board, I'd love to get involved with you guys. You guys run a tight ship over here and I respect every board member here, I really admire you. Nine Right Lane, McCormesey, right down the road over here, so.
And you're on the, so you can be on two boards?
I'm an associate on, on conservation.
Doesn't matter, you have to quit.
Are you sure?
You can have two boards in Wareham?
Pretty sure you can, no? No?
You can.
Can you?
You looked into it, huh?
I.
I know for a fact, you can't.
Really? Even if it's an associate position? Really?
So you have to quit with them to come with us?
Really, really? Interesting, now that you guys put me in ultimatum here.
What's that look?
There are some members of other boards that are members of more than one board.
Which board?
I could think of Sandy's on Concom and.
That's a, Concom is, is, it's a committee, it's not a board. Finance committee, it's not a board.
She's on the sewer commissioners.
She's, commissioner's not, it's, it's.
Is there a capital planning board as well, isn't she on that?
Zoning, planning, conservation, you cannot.
Land use boards.
Yes, I have an application in with you guys, yes.
Where you wanna be more specific?
I'm, I'm pretty sure you can be in two boards and it says on the application.
We can look into it.
Look, we'll look into it.
Yeah, well, either way, I'd be very interested.
I'm ninety-nine percent sure what I'm talking about, but.
Respect, yeah, wow.
So, yeah, let's, let's have the conversation, just, you know.
So anyway, so why, why you like the zoning?
Well, I've been on conservation for, I think, coming up closer to two years now and I've, I've learned a lot just being on that board. I'm a young guy, I'm just trying to get involved with the town and zoning has been something that keeps popping up. And they go hand in hand with conservation and I've been just seeing zoning as more of an opportunity to learn more and, you know, get, get out there in the community more, you know, I think zoning control is such a big aspect of Wareham that conservation doesn't. You know, you can always say so much, put your input in conservation, but in here in zoning, it's, it's, it's every project, really. So, I'd be interested.
Alright. I'd like to ask him a question. I'm always in favor of having younger, younger minds come on and submit. I, I feel so a lot of our town boards are inundated with what we call Q-tips.
What do you do for a living?
Uh, I, I do real estate, so I, I'm a real estate agent.
So you have knowledge.
Yeah, yeah.
Questions?
Nope, no questions.
Josh, you have a question for a gentleman? That's your board.
It's fun over there too. I gotta say, some of the, I've been here, what, three or two meetings now and it's, it's very different, very different, but.
Alright, we'll, we'll think about it, thank you.
Alright, we'll look into it, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for putting the application in. I think that there's other matters to be discussed this evening as well. I know that I had a conversation with Richard earlier.
Are we gonna do that with the board, with it being open or can we do that afterwards?
Is it son personal or?
It's, it's, I think we could probably bring a meeting to a close and have a con. If, if, if we're not discussing a particular application, we can have, we can have, but if we're discussing a particular application, we shouldn't be talking in a group.
If it's not, has nothing to do with the application, if it has to do with the application, it has to be a public. Where is it, is it a son about the application, Rich?
Well, there was, there's an, I, I think it is an ongoing. We haven't voted, it's, it's one that's still active.
You can.
I'm gonna, before I say anything, I'm gonna do more research and then I'm, we can talk.
If it's active, no, definitely not.
Yeah, they won't, they won't vote.
Fortunately, we can.
We won't have a, we won't have a conversation.
You can, with one person outside the hearing, you could discuss with one of us.
And, and we've done that, Richard and I have had that conversation, so there's the, there's the with one person. So. I've often wondered.
And it also, uh, has to do with the executive meeting, how do I handle that?
If it was, it, it, his, his concerns are what was discussed during an executive session. I think once anything that was discussed in that executive session has been voted on, we can discuss it outside of meeting.
Yeah, no.
Educate each other, we gotta wait a year?
Yeah, outside of meeting.
I'd be very, you're getting into dangerous waters here.
Well, out, af, once the vote is taken.
No.
Can't.
It's executive, that's why, we could one person, actually three person, but we can be like, for instance, three of us. Him and me alone, him and him alone legally outside.